I think we've drawn certain buyers to that area. The minimum setbacks, currently the front setback, as you can see on the plan, it's pretty much right on the front of Sagamore Street, it's about six inches. We're looking to maintain that, we're not looking to approach it anymore, not that there's much more to give, but we're looking to maintain what's currently there. In addition, if you look, there's really no rear because of the front edge, it's Prospect Street as well as Sagamore, so when you look to the left and to the right setbacks, what we're looking to do is approximately, on the left side and on the right, it's going to be about 3.2 feet. The reason for on the left is because it's a means of egress off the back, so that's that's shown here. As well over here, here's about 1.2 feet, 2 inches. Also, green area space for dwelling unit, the zoning order is called for 400, for this project, but that's coming in about 85 square feet. However, as I indicated, the majority of the lots in this area primarily covered by the structures, but a lot coverage over there, so we don't believe that any requests that we have here tonight would in any way liberate the surrounding areas, we think that it's inconformous and congruent with the other lots in the area.
Have you run a planning board already?
We've filed with them.
You haven't met with them?
Well, we met with, yeah, we met with the planning department, we met with Mr. Fatsies a number of times. This is the design that we came up with after meeting, we probably met with them at least four times. This is the design that we came up with, that we showed them.
But they haven't reviewed it?
The planning board has, the planning department has.
Any questions? I missed one thing here, I got the three one bedrooms, four two bedrooms, one two bedroom, two baths, three night baths, and one other.
So essentially, there's, yeah, there's three one, well, there's four one bedrooms and five two bedrooms, really the difference in makeup would be the number of beds.
Four, four and one. Four, five.
Any questions from the applicant?
I have one question. Did you ever consider making the footprint a little smaller, building up maybe another story or something like that?
After...
I was thinking about green space, I'm thinking about maybe not being right on to the, you know, property.
Yeah, I think when we met with planning, they, it seemed like the three stories was kind of where they wanted, we reconfigured units, there was more units when we started. We kind of parsed that down. What we didn't want to do was go too high in that neighborhood. So we thought that the three stories, and I think the city thought at that point that was adequate in that the number of units fit as well. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
All right, you can come back. I get those once in a while.
I know the applicant is pretty familiar, obviously, because you own the building. It's a pretty dense street, especially overnight. Is there like any, I mean, you're, people park in front of your building right now overnight all the time, correct?
Right.
And is that the same on Sagamore? Because I'm not familiar with Sag, I know...
Well, I mean, I live around a private box, so I don't really know what goes on overnight there, but during the day, the people that work in my office park on the street.
Okay. So they typically can find parking on the street during the day? I mean, I don't know, I drop, pick up and drop off from the train, sometimes I'll see another, it just looks fairly dense.
It is, yeah. But what we have parking in...
Is there a question?
Mr. Chin, you all set, Mr. Bredeau?
Yeah.
You have frontage on two streets, so I'm, and it's a square, it's a rectangular lot, so I'm confused about the problem that you're having with the shape of the lot being the hardship. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So I think where you are kind of fronting on two, on two streets there, it almost, it almost to me, and I think it will be, it almost makes it, I think it makes it oddly shaped, it's, it's tough to put something on there, we try to retrofit something on there, where you have two frontages, no rear, and really two sides, so I think that the way that it is shaped, I think when we were trying to go through the plans and try to put something on there, that did pose a hardship to us.
I should, I'd like to share my colleague's opinion that the density needs to be a little bit strong for the neighborhood and for this lot. I think creatively, with a rectangular lot and two street frontages, you could possibly come up with something that could work, give you some green space, make it, don't use every possible inch of this lot, and come up with something better for the neighborhood, just my sense.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that he's completely adverse to going further up, I think, I think you, I mean, you can go further up and you can get some negative feedback that you're going too high and that a building's going to be too high in that area, and I think, you know, then obviously you can get some negative feedback that it covers too much of the lot, but if the building's shorter in height and, you know, it's so scorp and the neighborhood is being so high.
We need to use the 14th space.
Mr. Flunders, Mr. Ryan, you?
I thought of it, he's back.
Right, Mr. Olds up.
Rental or condos?
Rental.
Okay. Forever?
Well, as long as I want.
Thank you.
I just have a big goal to cover, Mr. Chairman, I kind of think that this is something, they're asking for a lot from us, and I'm not necessarily opposed to all that, but they could go to planning, come up with something different, and we already kind of gave away, you know, everything.
And I understand what you're saying, and it's come up with something, and the parking, like you say, later on is tough. I don't know, do you put a building there with two things, parking, because that's all you have, parking on the street, and then we'll park on the street there anyway.
Yeah, I think the residents will have to park in there.
No, they'll be inside, everyone coming over to visit.
Coming in the next year, there is an open field, that's what it's like, but that street gets like over made, I mean...
Oh, I know.
If you drove there right now, that's both sides of that street.
Oh, sometimes it's tough, too.
Yeah.
All the gangs and stuff like that. All right, let's, let's get through to hearing. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. Paul Spahn?
We have a letter from DPW, and it's addressed to us. Let me review this, about the above reference project, our comments are as follows. Drainage, one. A stormwater management report could form into DEP's stormwater regulations they could be submitted. Stormwater reports must demonstrate compliance with the, with the ten stormwater management standards. The pre-development watershed plan and a post-developed watershed plan with the flow paths should be included in the report. The plan should indicate whether there are areas outside the limits of the property draining to the site, identify off-site, off-site areas draining to the site to establish locations and potential quantities of off-site drainage flow that would need to be collected or site graded provided to manage the additional flow on the site. Two, explain how the runoff of the roof will be disposed. Three, perform water flow test for the city's water department, specify the size, material for the domestic and fire services, install curb stop valves and boxes on the sidewalk, connect the proposed hydrant directly to the mains on, in Prospect Street, provide a new six-inch gate for the hydrant. The existing hydrant pipe should be cut and capped at the mains. Cut and capped existing water service at the connection with the mains. Sewer, recommend a straight run for the post sewer service pipe, also indicate the material size and slope of the sewer pipe where the connection is proposed. Clear cut is required for any change of direction. The proposed cleanup of the sewer pipe should have two 22.5 degree elbows and one 45 degree elbow. Details can be obtained for the sewer department. Two, the existing sewer pipe to remain in service shall be camera inspected and tested for its, so, yes.
Structural.
Integrity. Submit the inspection report for review before construction. All sewer pipes should have a minimum slope of one to, of one percent. A new manhole should be installed at connection with the main. Provide oil grease separated for the garage floor and connected to a sewer main on the street. Indicate the material size and slope of the pipe where the connection is proposed. Okay, general, one. Require the existing sidewalk and wheelchair ramp in front of proposed development to be reconstructed and set up individual patchwork for utility trenches and driveway entrances. The applicant should provide ADA, AB compliant sidewalk and wheelchair ramps at all crosswalks for the site. In addition, the courage should also be reset or replaced prior to the construction of the new sidewalk. Two, install stone or concrete survey monument to delineate the public right of way. The monument shall be set by a professional land surveyor and be installed prior to acceptance as built plan. Three, indicate whether there's any soil contamination on the site and hazards material from the existing building. Four, revise the plan to show limit of work, propose a road to confirm measures in reconstruction. Five, explain how to handle solid waste disposal, verify the ability of a trash truck to maneuver within the main circulation drive aisle. Six, confirm, confirm the house number to be used with engineering division, apartment of Public Works. Number seven, the developer proposes a very tight building footprint from city streets at a butter property. There will be, will there be any easement to set up the construction activities? In addition, will there be any permanent structures existing foundation and balcony on a city's or a butter's property? Eight, will there be any landscaping facilities for the residential development? Nine, provide construction details including utility connections. Ten, upon completion of the project, as no plan shown, all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds and benchmarks delineating the finding, public site, the total sale site. The facilities and right of ways need to be submitted along with digital files. The as-built plans shall be staffed and signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer, and elevation certificates also be submitted for hipper properties in a flood zone. For further information, please advise.
I went to public school in New York State, by the way. Is there anyone opposed to run the site? Opposed to run the site, first call?
I got a, not opposed, just undecided. I'd just like to say that I wish that you would continue to let it go to planning, it's being advertised in the ledger tomorrow, it is on the agenda for the next planning board on February 8th, so a couple more weeks, they can wait, they are asking for a lot. I'd like to see the plans when they post them more, I haven't seen them that much, and, you know, nothing wrong with just taking it slower, so seems like there's a good chance after here, if you get through with it, let them look at everything, and, you know, they approve it, it looks like you're going to get approved here, too, so, but...
Let it go to planning first, please.
You did that on Bridge Street, where it's confusing right now, please. Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed to run the site? Second call, third call? Call that party here and close. You know, I'm not, I'm not opposed, because I know it's a tough site, I know parking's tough and everything else when you're in a lot that big, but, you know, I mean, some of the colleagues here, what I'm hearing, want to go to plan and then come back two weeks?
Then we can, that would help the board, excuse me, if I could get that out of the board and answer some questions, but I think both working together may be beneficial, not only for the public, to make a better decision, so we have no problem with that at all.
And you're going to be finished, do you think, with them?
I, I think, I spoke, I spoke, I think that would be more quick on that, and again, this is something that was not, if they don't just come up, it was numerous, maybe the planning as far as what they wanted.
I know, counsel, they get something in there with the parking, or the side door in it, and we understand that.
So we worked hard with the department to get exactly what they were looking for, so...
So why don't we make a motion, if that's okay with everybody, the 14th, what do we do on the 14th? Doesn't matter anymore, we already had a hearing, it's just a decision. All right, 14th?
Thank you very much.
Madam number 16-0, we need for a special permanent variance, direct a unit, residential building with parking on ground level of the premises of 92 Sagamore Street, including a motion to continue the hearing until the 14th of February.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. So move. Yeah, one other thing, I just got a clarifier, I'm bringing in numbers. Ocean Ave, I got a request, case number 15074, George N. Cave, 47, Ocean Ave, Quincy, they need a six-month extension to, to put the financing together and start to get this project, they just need another six months, so that's all we have. I'm in favor. Do you have a motion for that?
Yes, Mr. Chilton, you had it, number, whatever it was. 15... Yeah, it's 15-074, George N. Cave, 47, Ocean Ave in Quincy, make a motion to extend for another six months.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? I oppose.
Thank you.
It'll take five minutes, no, you mean.
Is there anybody, maybe, first call?
That's just my two cents. I'm not even else going to speak, let them speak, too, they got their own. Mr. Cavais, any ideas?
I have an idea that maybe in 38, Unit Two, we cut back one, we don't allow the new bedroom upstairs, so that would make it how many bedrooms?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, take this wall down on the attic, and give that whole thing to Ford, okay? To take out this here, to 38, this is all Ford. So you can have a playroom up there for kids, or whatever she wants.
All right, so that means there would be six bedrooms now.
Right.
That means one bed, no, your kids are young, but they're going to get bigger, right? So that would leave you two one-bedroom units?
Yeah. I mean, the way that, I think this is giving the concern, I think that's, that's reasonable, the way that we, we thought about it is, I mean, that's the American dream for us, right? Living in one unit and hopefully the...
Then you get two units to rent, and they'll pay for it.
They'll pay for it, so that was our original kind of...
And, and you could make a nice playroom up there, pool table for the kids, you can buy some nice ping pong machines, and buy a navy's crazy town, and you need drums, drums.
So, so we're finishing the...
Well, we don't know yet, we'll just start. Just a suggestion, just, just so it is. Two, two single one-bedrooms, you can rent out, help you pay for your home, and who knows, maybe there'll be one cot in there, and your friends can come over and there's an extra spot, you know? Just my idea, anything else? Have you got something you want?
I'd like to, I think, I think we get rid of the upstairs, the added bedroom on Unit Two.
Right.
You know, the post one.
Right, make that open space, you can make that one big giant bedroom over here, a playroom here, so the kids come up, you have a playroom in here, and their master bath, and everything could be over there.
That's the bedroom, you guys.
Yeah, sounds good. Well, I mean, it's not like you're going to make more space, you can knock the garage down, it's still not going to make more space.
Right, yeah, right. But, but, you know, right, but the garage is gone, they're, yeah. I know what you're saying, you need an angle park.
So there's a, another parking space that we're not calling out, is, this is the driveway from the street inn, so this is in front of the, I'm not sure if that's illegal parking, but this, this is the car there.
So that's, so that, so you have six spaces?
It's already six, the outback, yeah, and then there's one more.
Well, you know, when they're renting out your unit, you can tell people what's your parking space is now, when your kids are small, and when they get bigger, you may change that. But that would make your unit more valuable, so you reclaim some of the rights, you know what I'm saying, you don't have one, have many bedrooms, but you have more parking. It's sort of a trade-off. It's just something to think about.
Yeah. You can get in there, turn around, and get out, and the house is, it's not huge, as it is, even though where those parking spaces are, I'm not sure if they're picking that. Any other ideas?
I, I think that's probably the only potential solution, is to either, you know, keep it separated and don't allow that side to be, you know, redone at all. That could stay a storage or something like that, or you make it all part of Unit Forty. I think, you know, this is something we struggle with, you just saw it in the last case, if parking is an issue, and it's becoming more and more of a national quinsey, and unfortunately, there's no long-street parking on Oakland Street, you know, there's, there's no way for you guys to have any spillover parking that we could say, well, you know, like the last one where there's a park across the street, you know, based on your location, it just makes it really tough, so we have to make sure that we can get cars off the street and make more and more, you know, things like that, so, and I know it's not you guys, the two little kids, because they're not getting behind the wheel for another 15 years, but if you leave in five years, that's what we have to think of, you know, so...
Yeah. Nothing else?
Covered it all.
Okay, is there anyone I'd like to speak in favor? Just go sit down. Anyone like, first call, second call, third call closed, Paul Spahn, I have, Paul Spahn, we'd be glad to give you a above reference project and have no comments. Anyone opposed or undecided, first call?
My only call is okay, I've been resident of Quincy for 40 years, and when I saw this application, I was afraid it was going to be another boarding house. We have so many room houses down in Quincy, and most of us, we go down to the planning department or the building department, they're, they're looking for these all the time, there's so many illegal boarding rooms in the city of Quincy. You know, I congratulate you for bringing it up to you, but I oppose it because I think it's another boarding house setup.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided, second call, third call, call the party, give them a call. I think it's just, 40 Oakland, finish the upstairs the way they want to, put the plans we're all putting, second half on 38, I'd be in favor of that. I would be too.
Would it be in favor of a modified third floor as well?
Third floor as what?
The modified third floor, because...
What?
Unit Forty.
Either Unit Forty or I'm finished, I'm not going either.
All right, the motion unified, gets the upstairs third floor, with the other changes that are in the plan.
Mr. Chairman, Madam 16, you guys understand what we're doing, right? You understand what we're doing now, right?
Third floor, third floor.
Oh, thank you.
Which one, bedroom? I'm sorry.
So Madam 16-087, Ryan Chin, and, Ms. Chin, providing to finish the attic and dividing half to create an additional bedroom for each unit, and also one full bath in Unit 38, compare to room in Unit Forty to a full bath on premises number 38-40, Oakland Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant to finish the attic, but not divide unit half, the attic would stay in part of Forty, and I think we're okay with the one bedroom, one bath, with the bedroom with that attic.
Second?
Second.
Second. On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So move. Thank you. Further, the next agenda, case number 16089, in-band, high-band for the variance to subdivide?
No, 16088.
16088, down law, 1608. Eric Zhou, providing to change and alter upon the use, preparation and sale of dental products and preparation and sale of sushi, no public access, all products to be delivered on the premises in the 329A Newport Avenue. The applicant, the representative of here?
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Chairman, our members, for record, my name is Attorney Jack P. Milgram, I'm the acting applicant, Eric Zhou, because I was here just this evening, and you know we have before the board this my petition for a finding, for a change of use from dental manufacturing to sushi manufacturing to pre-existing non-conforming commercial storefront. 329A Newport Avenue was a commercial storefront, so along the road, commercial storefronts between Newport Avenue and Brook Street, it's my understanding that the prior use was dental, was not a dental office, I understand it was a lab for manufacturing. My client's proposal is for sushi manufacturing, it's a small space, it's approximately 550 square feet, the maximum number of employees would be two, one full-time employee would be Mr. Zhou, and possibly one part-time employee, the Alice, would be from 4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. My client lives within market vicinity of this commercial unit, he would go to work, he would manufacture his sushi, he would load up his truck, and he would go and deliver. As I indicated, it's pre-existing non-conforming, there is no parking in the front of the building, there is no parking in the rear, however, there is a entry rate into the rear of all those storefronts on the back of the building around where the firehouse is, and you can put a vehicle there, you'd be able to load, unload there, and then go and deliver his sushi. You know, this proposal would be more detrimental to the neighborhood, in contrast to what was there before. I've had opportunity to speak several times to Mr. Duka, in regards to this proposal, my understanding that Mr. Duka doesn't have any objections, if I've had opportunity to speak to the Wood Tree City Council, Ian Kane, Mr. Kane didn't express an opinion one way or the other, simply asked for a copy of the lease, which we provided to him. If you had to answer any questions that you have, I ask if you look favorably on the finding. Thank you.
Hours of operation are you going to consult?
4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.
4:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m.?
That's correct.
Seven days?
Seven days. Mrs. Zhou, keep up there, please.
And what are we doing for rubbish? What do you have for rubbish? Where you putting the trash, your sushi, your fish, all the other stuff?
The rear, there's rear, rear egress, we go back there, where the alleyway is, no rear.
What do you have back there? What are you putting back there? Dumpster or what?
Um, I guess we're going to put there whatever Mr. Shirley wants, I imagine, what would be a dumpster.
Does it move for a dumpster?
Yeah, there's, there's a big alley, the alley is very good for that, yeah.
So, you know, if you put in a dumpster, what they're going to have to pick up? Three days a week, one day a week?
I think, one day a week.
One day a week? Those are my questions, any questions?
I have a few. Not that this means any to do with what the sites are, but what kind of places do you sell your sushi to?
To the market.
To a market?
Yes.
Which kind of market? Just curious.
Foodies.
Okay.
And the Northeastern University.
Where?
Northeastern University.
Oh.
It's all, it's all institutional, institutional clients, it's an existing business.
Yeah, it's seven years already.
Yeah. There's going to, it's going to be no public access, there's no retail, it's not a restaurant, no one's going to be coming to the, to the site.
So where, where is, where was the business? Where did you have it before?
In Boston, in 31st Germania Street, in Boston.
Germania?
Yeah, Germania. G E R M A N I A Street. It's Germania Street.
So, but there is no parking, so you're going to have to walk through the alley with, with your stuff?
Yeah.
The only question I have.
I don't have any questions.
I have none.
Go back to the, the rubbish issue, are you bringing your whole fish and cleaning them up in this, this area, or is it, I, I, once a week for fish sitting in a dumpster in the back is going to be both a odor and a environment problem.
I, I think maybe a better answer to that, as I indicated, we're going to do whatever Mr. Shirley requires us to do, Mr. Shirley, you know, whatever he wants to pick up, certainly we'll figure it out.
You take, you take your stuff in every day?
Yep.
What kind of stuff do you make sushi, what, what do you bring in?
Fish filets, or... Salmon, salmon place?
Salmon place?
Yeah.
Salmon ome?
Yeah, salmon tuna.
Tuna?
Yeah, that's it.
How much, how much fish do you bring in a day?
How many fishes?
I mean, how many pounds of fish?
It depends, no.
Two twenty-five pounds, three, I don't know. What do you buy every day? You buy it every day or every other day? I don't know.
I usually buy about every week, though, once a week.
Once a week? And buying fish? Once a week, and buying fridge, frozen?
Every piece, yeah.
Oh, it's frozen?
It's frozen, yeah, all of this is frozen. Not the fresh one.
They brought out the water, alright?
So you're.
Yeah. Gotta come up, gotta come up from that island, or he's not even.
You know what's, if I might, Mr. Duka, yes. Uh, I, I could suggest, uh, we can have a help department look at the dumpsters, there are totes and you may have to have more than one pick up, I think. Or he might have to have a daily takeout. Take his rubbish every day and wherever it's gotta go.
Can we approve based on Drew's recommendation?
Oh, we can go back, I think it's Drew's really decision, right? Why doesn't he have to give a license then, now? Right, right, but wouldn't you wanna, wouldn't you wanna hear that before you okay that? Wouldn't you wanna know what they decide? I don't know.
I'm just trying to.
I would.
I don't know when it leases up in Boston, I'll try and hold up, you know, guys just.
When is your lease up? In Boston?
When you have to come here? When you have to start working?
When do you, when do you, I know you'd like to move tomorrow, I get that.
We've actually.
Uh, it's just possible, yeah.
Are you just a rental month by month there?
No, we, no, 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 we signed, we signed a commercial lease, unfortunately, my client was held up several months because we ran into some difficulties getting in touch with Mr. Kane. And, uh, out of respect for him, we waited several months, he had indicated he wanted to speak to you on the building, which he never did, but we waited for that, so he's actually a little upset with me because he's trying to understand why this hasn't, we've done a little closer.
Right.
But we tried, you know, to comply with the process, which I always try to do, so.
Would you mind two weeks? Come back two weeks, we can, we can do this in two weeks? I'd just like to make sure of what's going in and out of there and have answers, not maybe, I might, I might have a dumpster. And I wanna know if people are bringing in fish and cutting it and leaving it, and what our rules are.
I don't, I don't have a problem with any of that, I guess it's not like questions, we can do it the other way, if we can approve a subject review by Mr. Shilley, so I want to come back, because he's been waiting for months.
Well, uh, I know, but I don't feel comfortable with that, that's just me, I don't know. I, I, I'd wanna know those answers. And what I got when the answers was, the dumpster's gonna be there once a week. That I don't like, now it's whatever he says. Well, I'd like to know that before I make a decision on a piece of property that's gonna be making sushi, fish, every day in the neighborhood, so. I'm not gonna vote on that, so myself. Are you planning to go to license board? Uh, for a license, a CB license for wholesale? Was that part of the plan at all? I hadn't considered, I might just mention it, um. I mean, there's a lot of things we don't know. Well, I'm just saying, we have a license board. Alright. That's what, you know, could take care of it at that point. I'm just talking about. No, exactly, I am too, I just, wouldn't you like to know the answers? The answers we got were a dumpster, once a week. Now it's, maybe he's gotta do it every third day, maybe. I'd like to know what that is before, so I feel comfortable, people living in the city, and there ain't rodents running around because it's gonna be something in the dumpster for five days.
I didn't, uh, so, to that point, is there, is there other approvals that you have to go through at all?
Oh, yeah, he has license, right, doesn't he? Well, it was possible, there are orders that we, uh, address orders, and so he would have to comply. Uh, on the issue of whether he gets in there is this board's decision and everyone else goes, whether, um, I, I, I don't know the answers of the license. I don't, I don't. I could call Drew later. And I don't know what they make fish, is fish have to be every three days removed, two days removed? It has to be something better than a week.
I think what I'm saying, you'll be taking dumpster.
Well, no, it's gonna be a small, of course, it's gonna be. Remember that guy that was, who was gonna build that sushi place? He said he's taking it with him every day.
Yeah, that one, yes, I know that.
Right. Right, but he was, but he's gonna take it every, every day. They were gonna take the, the, the remains, whatever they had with them every day, wherever it was going, I don't know, but. That's another thing.
Yeah, that's a dumpster.
I'll have to do something, however you guys feel, what you guys feel like.
Sorry, maybe you wanna say something?
Of course he does. Sure he's doing his job.
Well, I think, well, I just don't.
I mean, I, I don't think that, I mean, not, not that I think that's in our purview, and I'm not, not trying to disagree with you in any, I, I. Like if we had a restaurant here changing tomorrow, that was an existing restaurant, this wouldn't even be a topic of conversation.
No, because it was already done. We just went from dental, which is. Stuff going, your rubbish could sit there for six months, no one's gonna know, your plastic tools.
Well, I don't disagree, but I mean, they still have, like, they still have code requirements, I know what our code is for, like, we can, I, I.
So you wanna do that, we can approve it with, with, just whatever you say, Mr. Duka, they'll, they'll make sure that.
That's what I was gonna say, can we approve it with a condition that, you know, whatever Drew Shilley recommends?
Right.
Because he's, he's not gonna.
But I'd like to know those after we approve, I'd like to know what.
Well, if he comes, yeah, if we can.
They, they have worked on Drew today, I can tell you that, the last one. Oh, I know. And I'll be glad to work to make sure Drew's involved and that everything gets, uh, done. I just worry about the neighborhood, that's all I'm saying, fish is brutal. Those are absolutely. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you a funny story, it'll take a second. Mr. Guy started smelling like ten years ago, a little worse, every day it got worse and worse. How is it? I, my buddy used my car, we had a pack of flammers in the trunk. One of them slid behind, in the trunk behind the seat, honest to God. Most harsh shell, it took me like three months to get the smell off. Did you sell the car? No, I got it out finally, I had to send it to a detail, twice.
I got a fetish turn.
It's just, it was, it was. And the left, I took instead of frozen ones, instead of frozen crambie, I buy fresh crambie, I put it in the cabinet like I can. And we claimed it was getting little, like, fucking gods, man, miss that smell. I mean, you know, when it is, you're talking, you're doing stuff in the yard, crambie goes in the cabinet.
Yeah, I thought the end of that story was gonna be you roll the window off.
It's called dementia. Alright, wanna do that, we could, uh.
I mean, I, I'd be comfortable, that would make this, I mean, I think this is a young guy trying to start a business and already a member of the.
We can do that, why don't we do that? Ever motion for a, yeah, yes.
Maybe you can vote, yeah, and a.
Madam sixteen dash zero eight eight, Eric Zhou, for a finding, the change to non-conforming use for preparation of dental products to preparation of sushi. No public access and all products will be delivered on the premises. Number third, three twenty-nine A Newport Avenue. I make a motion that we, uh, do find a finding, find a finding, uh, on the following condition that the applicant, uh, heed all of the, uh.
Rules of regulation, health department?
Rules of regulation of the health department.
Back there?
Second.
We're getting removed.
We're getting, we don't need to.
Everything, why not, right? You can't pick and choose in those, that'll happen, right? I agree with that.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Chairman, Madam motion, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, second? The motion, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? One yay, can I get one yay? Yay! Any needs, no.